Do we have Kevin on the line? Can anybody? We do.
He's going to join. I talked to him a few moments ago, just a little while. He said he would join.
Okay, great.
I am on the line. Thank you.
Oh, there you are.
Hi, Kevin.
Hi. Good evening.
All right, I think we're, I think we're ready.
All right. Call to order the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garne.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Woodall.
Excused.
Councilmember Johnson.
Excused.
Councilmember Strand.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
City Manager Knob.
Here.
Chief of Police Connor.
Here.
Finance Director Dillingham. Community Development Director Caldwell.
Here.
Water and Roadways Superintendent Jensen.
Here.
Waste Water Superintendent Taylor.
Here.
And City Clerk is present. Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not intended. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs unless a finding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to three minutes. City Manager Rosa. City Clerk, are there any public comments?
On law? We do have one. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, or email. That was just gonna say.
We do have one public comment.
Would you please read that, please?
Sure. Says, "I want to bring attention in regards to the landscape medians that begin their city hall and continue south throughout the downtown area. These medians have been neglected throughout the summer as well as much of the past few years. I understand we're short-staffed in the public works department at this time, but at this point, I wanted to suggest that we possibly look into hiring a professional landscaping contractor that could remove the weeds correctly at the roots, prune existing trees, abate dead shrubbery, and fine-tune the drip irrigation systems. We could put this project out to competitive bid and possibly use the savings of wages from the vacant public works employee to fund this. Volunteers in the community have pitched in from time to time in the past few years, but at this time, this project needs great attention of a professional landscaper. With the city working hard to improve our abatement and code enforcement ordinances, we need to lead by example, not only for our own citizens and community, but for our current, new, and future businesses. I want to thank Nick Angeloff of the chamber and the many volunteers that have worked hard with the amazing display of our American flags. Veterans Day is just around the corner as well as the winter rains. The time is now to address this much neglected issue. Thank you for your consideration and attention to this matter. Sincerely, Cindy Treadwell."
Thank you. Um, are there any hands raised? On, for a call in?
Apparently, no.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move to the consent calendar. Is there any item that the council, any council member would like to pull from the consent calendar? No? Thank you. Staff or public? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion that we approve this consent calendar as presented.
There's a second? Okay, we have Councilmember Strand's second. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strand?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garne?
Yes. Motion passes three zero. Um, now we will move to staff communications, page sixty-nine.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Garne, and members of the council. Just a couple of things I want to make sure that we bring to the attention of the council regarding the mayor. Aside from having some great Halloween decorations in her house. Uh, Deborah was also attended and really was, uh, the guest of honor for the community coffee with the chief of police and the Riedel, uh, school district superintendent, who Senator McGuire organized a community coffee, uh, which was done by Zoom. And so it was pretty well attended, some good questions, some zingers in there for the mayor. And overall, it went, it went very well. So I think the mayor should be recognized for that, uh, in addition to the decoration. The, uh, so I think Cindy Treadwell brought up a great point. Over the past few months, we've been trying to hammer out a, an arrangement with a local group to do ongoing maintenance for the medians. Um, we do have a Plan B that is in, in, uh, process right now. I don't want to give up completely on, on the community group that, um, was interested in the, uh, median maintenance. But we did put out to bid, um, a, uh, median maintenance, uh, project to license contractors, to landscape contractors. And we have received, uh, um, some, uh, bids back on that. It's, uh, within a budgeted level for the city, so it's not something that, uh, we brought back for the council. But by the end of October, uh, our intent is to have this, uh, situation cleared up and the medians, uh, the medians cleaned up. And so, uh, there's a lot of, uh, maintenance that is involved in that. And we have been a little bit, uh, short-staffed, uh, but we want to make sure that we get this cleaned up. And we have a long-term, uh, plan, uh, to maintain the, the medians. As, uh, over the past few years, since they were installed, they were mostly just kind of, uh, growing into their, uh, position. Didn't really require a huge amount of maintenance. Uh, but now what we're finding is that really it's, you know, pretty overgrown and difficult to find time to get to in between some of the mandated functions of, uh, of public works in a, you know, constrained, uh, construction work season. So we, uh, the council may notice, uh, that we did do some work on the street striping. The contractor came in, did, uh, the yellow striping. There will be additional work hopefully completed by the end of the week. The schedule for, uh, the street striping is a little bit, uh, outside of our, uh, control as it's a regional project. So they are doing work in, uh, a lot of the other cities, uh, including Trinidad, Arcata, and Fortuna. Uh, but they will get to, uh, finishing the, uh, the white, uh, uh, speed signs and crosswalks here, hopefully by the end of the week. Um, and then, uh, so we did have, uh, some inquiries regarding a film project in Riedel, performing some night, uh, street scenes with vehicles. Um, that has been, uh, delayed. It is associated with the film that's going on in, uh, in Ferndale. That has, uh, that has been delayed, so hopefully it'll be, uh, something that takes place after the medians are, are spruced up. Um, and then we also had, uh, Dan McCully, our, uh, artist on Wildwood Avenue, install a sculpture, uh, over by the Chamber of Palmer's. So we put out a press release, uh, on that. Uh, but, uh, for, for right now, that's all that, uh, I have for an update. But we do have, uh, a full staff report. Uh, so if there's any other questions of staff, uh, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Wilson, do you have any questions of staff?
I have a couple. Wanted, uh, uh, City Manager, are we, are we gonna bring back and discuss, uh, your, uh, street plan to the council in the future?
Yeah, so, um, we've been, uh, waylaid by some of the contract negotiations, the time consuming, uh, consuming of it, and then trying to figure out what the best way to be productive with it is. And so we're, we're hoping to do that in addition to the economic development workshops in November when we have the full council back. So during October, we know that, that, uh, some council members have taken some time off. Uh, but we want to revisit that in, uh, in November and, uh, move those projects forward.
Good enough. Thank you. The other question on, uh, Dan McCully's and the sculptures, is this the last sculpture? Or are there additional sculptures going forward in the future?
Uh, he told me that the next one he was planning on replacing was the bear sculpture. Um, so that'll be, uh, up next. Uh, but theoretically, it's kind of ongoing as long as the artist is still, still interested. He'll be, uh, phasing in and out artwork. Um, I can certainly ask for him to, to, uh, present, um, some of his plans for the future artwork, but it's still all revolves, my understanding is it's still all revolves around the theme of, uh, local wildlife and, uh, creatures.
Okay, I'm just curious. That was, I, I, I'm glad that they're moving forward and they're changing. Look forward to that. The other item that I had was a question for the City Clerk. Uh, on the completed, he had a, set a completed survey on the COVID, uh, attendance of the council. Is our, is our attendance, um, how does that compare to normal attendance? Or does, or does it reflect that on the survey?
Councilmember Wilson, the survey had to do with how many cities were back meeting in council chambers and if less people were attending the virtual meetings. And it, the overall, um, you know, survey resulted in most cities are doing exactly what we're doing. Most cities have not gone back into meeting live. And a couple of them I noticed had, but they limit public participation to just, you know, six-foot distancing. So, um, but, but for the most part, the people are, cities are still holding virtual meetings. And there is less attendance.
All right, thank you. That's, uh, I believe that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Strand?
Yeah, so, uh, tagging along on, uh, Councilman Wilson's comment on Dan McCully. I think there was a year timeframe on that contract we did with him. If I remember correctly. Four years, five years?
I believe it was a five-year.
Yeah, I know there's a year attached to that. Also, uh, either, uh, staff or Mayor Garne, uh, well, how did your DANCO meeting go?
Um, the DANCO, am I, am I, okay. Uh, the DANCO meeting, um, went well. They, the updates are they've, uh, increased their security cameras. They now have the security officer who, uh, they, they gave him residence there. So the security person lives there, um, continuously, twenty-four seven. And, um, the, uh, property manager is now, and basically nine-to-five employee. I didn't nail down her exact hours, but the concept is nine-to-five employee. They are, were responsive. They did tell us though that as far as, um, coming into the complex, that it is a private complex rented by, it, it's much like any other rental. It isn't something that the city can go in and say, "We want to look inside of this," or "Look inside of that," or, or inspect this or that. It is, we can do no more than we could do for any other, uh, apartment complex or home because it is, they are individuals who are renting from a landlord. Uh, but they are very open to us. Meeting, we've had, uh, two meetings since our, since the last council meeting on the seventeenth or the fifteenth of, um, September. And, um, they are, they are open to, you know, any questions we have. I would say, you know, I did say to them that, um, I don't see any reason, as we weren't doing an ad hoc meeting, we were just actually asking them, uh, or committee, we were just asking them for an update. They have said that they will come, uh, and give a presentation to the city council public about, you know, their position, what's, what they're about, what the, the, the situation is. And, um, and I, I was good with that. They weren't, didn't seem as if they were trying to hide anything. They were, they're very forthcoming. So that's pretty much it. I would encourage you, if you want, they have a meeting every Thursday. I would encourage you, uh, Councilwoman Strand, if you want to ask them questions, if you want to find out information that you feel you're not, not being addressed, then it's, it's a Zoom meeting. I can give you that information and you can absolutely go on and, and talk to them and ask them the questions.
I would love that information. I would love to attend those meetings.
Okay.
Um, was there any discussion regarding, you know, uh, services? Are they receiving services from the state? Has all of that?
They have county, they have a county person there, um, who is, um, addressing the issues that need, that I imagine that you're, you're referring to. There's a whole HIPAA, there's a whole HIPAA thing that they cannot discuss.
I understand HIPAA one hundred percent. I've been in medical billing. I know what HIPAA is.
I'm just, yeah.
It doesn't have anything to do with HIPAA. I'm not asking about specific residents.
They have a county person. I, I don't believe there was a state, there wasn't a state person on, on the Zoom that I can remember. Um, but there is a county person who is there. He's there, um, daily and so I, I, I guess I really, I'm not, I'm not really sure what it is, what exactly it was that you wanted me to find out. Um, I relayed the information from the council. I relayed our concerns. Um, City Manager relayed concerns and the Chief of Police relayed concerns. Um, so, um, they, they listened. They gave us feedback on what they were doing in the moment as far as cameras, as far as security. And, um, and so that's where it is. And so that, that's.
I really, I am looking forward to receiving that information so I can attend those meetings. Thank you. Also, um, uh, staff, has there been any further talk about the tagging at the ball field at the school?
Uh, I'm not aware of any, uh, requests, uh, from the school. I know that, uh, the City Clerk did, uh, provide you a copy of the, of the, uh, uh, joint use agreement regarding that, the specific, um, uh, section. But I have not actually received a request, uh, for the city to, to do anything over there.
Well, you're on the nuisance committee. We had discussion about it at the nuisance committee regarding the tagging at that ball field. So, I mean, I know you're aware of the situation. And reading through this agreement, uh, to me, it looks like the city is responsible for those buildings. The city is the one who, uh, put them in. And the agreement is pretty clear to me that we're responsible for the building. So I suggest that maybe we, um, agendize this for next meeting so that, uh, everybody else can look. I don't know if everybody's gotten this copy. Um, but see what stance, uh, they feel on that and where we should go. We need to get that tagging taken care of.
Okay. Okey-dokey.
That was the only other thing other than, um, I am very interested in the DANCO because I've heard that, uh, they're looking at putting another DANCO property in. That's just word on the street. I talked to Mr. Caldwell about it and he told me he didn't hear anything about that, although he originally told although he originally told me Danko was looking at the property across the street. So, yeah, heads up on that. I think we should be proactive in seeing to it that everything Danko promised us, we are getting. And in fact, if they're wanting to come in again, they need to be sure that they are seeing to what they already promised our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And, okay. I think we then will move on. We are for public that is watching and for the council and staff. We are pulling item one on the special call items. Authorizing the city manager execute an MOU between the city of Riedel and the county. The county is having to do a little change. And so we will, that's being pulled and we will bring it back when the county's change is ready and they are ready to go. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of an ad hoc committee for proposed mural project. I am hesitant to sign someone who isn't present, so I think it's you. I think I think Councilmember Wilson and myself. As Councilmember Strong is not running for reelection and I don't think it's going to be done in the next three weeks. So I would ask Councilmember Wilson if you are interested, if you would be on the ad hoc committee for the mural.
You were looking to do it too?
Yes. And.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do that. My my question on that, while we're talking about it, is that that's going to be placed on the Chamber of Commerce building. That's correct?
Correct.
Now, how does that work? The chamber doesn't own the building. They just rent it. If it comes to the point they quit renting it, what happens to the mural?
Well, I don't know that answer because I have not engaged in that yet. But city manager?
I think that's a great question. I think that's what we need the ad hoc to help hammer out for us. I verbally have received, you know, indications that the property owner is willing to have the mural painted on the building with certain conditions. All of that would need to be put in writing. And then, you know, there's still quite a bit of work that is associated with this that we need to go through. So that's really what we're hoping to have the ad hoc committee go through. This, this was really brought forward by a member of the Chamber of Commerce. Who really just asked the city, is there any way that you can help us hold us off? And so I know that downtown beautification is really important to the council. And and so we wanted to bring this forward to see if there was something that we could do immediately. And I believe it was planted in this, or the idea came from the recent nuisance committee meeting where I stated that staff had been looking into certain options for murals throughout town as a method of helping to contain or limit graffiti in the community. And so hearing that, they wanted to make sure that that everybody understood there was a mural proposal on the table. And so that's, you know, it's either something that we do independently outside of a larger mural program or something that we wrap into a broader mural program. But but I think it's important that an ad hoc committee be formed to make recommendations for the full council.
Is this a different? Didn't we have a discussion at one time about having some kiosks with located around town? Is this, is that a different project or did that, did that just fall, go by the wayside?
I think that was a different idea for for kiosks, for historical kiosks. It's certainly a good idea and it's and it's out there. But there hasn't been any traction on it.
Okay, I got lost in kind of the events that we're in. So this was part of that or not.
I also have a comment on this. Didn't we have a discussion at Christmas time about the city giving money to projects that are like they wanted to give money for the Christmas decorations? And there was some laws that we had to follow? Is this within those guidelines?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So part of what I think the ad hoc needs to tackle is 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 how to do this legally and appropriately, if there even is a role for the city outside of a broader mural program. There are other cities in the region who do mural programs annually. Staff has been in recent contact with them just to do some basic research. And so those are all very good considerations as to what what the appropriate function is. What I wanted to do is try to get the council involved as early as possible so that, you know, so that any recommendation that was that was made by the ad hoc would be would be sound.
And I'd also just like to add that because of the tagging, you know, I don't know if they're, just because it's a mural doesn't mean they're not going to tag that. It might be, make it even worse. So just a thought.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. And in the other jurisdictions agreements, there's a requirement for the property owner to, you know, maintain the mural. So there are certain obligations of the property owner that may not have been communicated to the to the property owner. There's, there's a lot of the details that have to go into this. And I think if this, you know, turns into a broader discussion of a broader mural program that some of the other cities are able to pull off, that would be, you know, beneficial.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm looking forward to having discussions. I looked at the drawings and I looked at the color palette and it's very bland and unexciting. So I just want to be a part of it so I can say, maybe you want to might bump that up a little bit because it makes you want to cover it. So I don't know. It's it's kind of bland. But I look forward to having a discussion with the, is it the chamber? City manager who will be leading this?
In theory, it would be the chamber who would be be leading this. You know, and a lot of this is to be determined. But it is their building that they do rent, that they have the relationship with the property owner that we would hope that they would, you know, take the lead and, you know, also making sure that the depictions of, you know, the Native American community are endorsed by the Native American community and that, you know, the the overall project is is acceptable.
Thank you. So I will, so it's myself and Frank, Councilmember Wilson, on the for the ad hoc. We will move on. Is there, were there any public comments or questions or emails coming in to address that, this issue? Or city clerk?
No, no emails.
And currently, no hands raised. Thank you very much. And so we will then move on to the discussion on the evacuation plan for Riedel. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Garns. In light of the recent wildfires that have produced unprecedented levels of high altitude and low altitude smoke, that has obviously caused a lot of concern in the community. Mayor Garns has requested that the topic of the evacuation planning for Riedel be agendized. And evacuations are in fact covered and and discussed under the existing emergency operations plan for the city. So attached to your agenda item, which begins on page 113, through the next 18 or so pages, there are certain sections of the emergency operations plan that are highlighted and pulled out. The entire document is some 350 pages. So we wanted to pull out the relevant sections related to evacuations and and bring those items to to the council's attention. And so we, Jeff Connor, Chief Jeff Connor is on the line to also discuss in a little bit more detail the evacuation plans proposed for the city. And before he begins, though, I just want to reiterate that really at no time and we were in daily contact with County OES. At no time was it really feasible during the recent fire event that we were going to see a fire event, a wildfire event in Riedel, you know, based on the West complex. We had been in contact with them in Riedel, even even though it's it's adjacent to the 101 and 36. The geographic distance is quite large and then the forest composition also changes. But we were very much aware of the situation, trying to get updates on it and be prepared in case something like that did occur. So I'll go ahead and turn over to Chief Connor to see if there's any additional comments.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As Kyle mentioned, the evacuation plan is included in the emergency plan, which was last updated in 2003. And if you look at that document, you'll see that it's full of rather generic language rather than any specifics. One of the few things you'll notice in there is it lists staging area and evacuation area is the fairgrounds in Ferndale. Even that's problematic depending upon the the type and the extent of the disaster we're facing. The most likely type of emergency that would require an evacuation is a flood. I'm aware of four occasions in the last 25 years in which we've had to do minor evacuations. Mainly the trailers located at the Rivers Edge Park. They've been moved to higher ground. The most recent, on the most recent occasion that this occurred, the staging area was at the tennis court parking lots. Many of the people who owned their trailers elected to move them to locations outside of the city. But those who didn't have a place to go parked them in the parking lot and they were there for less than a week and as I really collect. Another natural disaster that could require an evacuation is an earthquake. And not necessarily the earthquake itself, but a fire resulting from the earthquake such as occurred in Scotia after the 92 earthquake. This could be basically block sized structure fires. It could be exacerbated by a lack of water due to the breaking of water mains. This might be an occasion where we would use, depending upon the location and the size of the fire, we might actually use the fairgrounds as an area for people to go and stage. Planning for an event like that is difficult without more information and it would probably be very rapid. Not a whole lot of time to put into planning and more of a just, you need to leave right now and here's where you go. I believe this was brought to the the council's attention, as Kyle mentioned, due to the the fire, the August complex and the Wright complex down east of Garberville Redway. The chance of a wildfire causing evacuation in Riedel is fairly unlikely, but probably a rising possibility with the climate change that's occurring throughout the world. For example, in 2018, there was a fire on the ridge north of town. It was caused by a tree falling onto a power line. That fire was under control and in a matter of hours. It never became a threat to the city and was handled mainly by tankers from the Heidsville Runerville Airport and the local volunteer fire department. If there was to be a wildfire that would force an evacuation, the city of Riedel would probably be ordered by County OES. They would have significantly more knowledge than what is available to the city staff to order such an evacuation. And in so doing, it would allow us to draw on the resources that they have available. And one of the, one of the concerns that was brought to the city's attention was the problems of evacuating people who don't own their own cars or have some form of transportation. And County OES, State OES would provide additional resources for that. Could be anything from transit authority buses, school buses, HSU buses, the National Guard. All of these would become available in a disaster of that magnitude. However, what would be available would also be dependent upon the size, size of the disaster. I mean, if all of coastal Humboldt County is being threatened by the same fire, Riedel only have to fend for itself to some extent. The emergency plan calls for staging areas for those people who do not have transportation, where they can meet and be organized into groups of people to be transported out. Kind of hard to to make any suggestions without more knowledge of the disaster at hand. But it would seem that two locations would make sense. One at City Hall, which is pretty centrally located, and another in the area of Davis-Ridgby and Center, where we have large populations who may or may not have transportation. And with that, I'll turn back over to the council and answer any questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And one thing that the city manager didn't say, but he had said to me was during this COVID situation that we are in, and because of the volunteer corps, we were actually made aware of a lot of people, citizens in Riedel who are disabled or who don't have transportation, who have needs. So we actually have more information than we did prior to that because because of the volunteer corps. So that's actually, so Councilmember Strong, do you have any questions for staff?
No, no questions. I just saw that the letter from citizens, concerned citizens of Riedel. We don't have school buses in Riedel. There are no school buses here. And, yeah, it's great that you've put together a list. There are a lot of families here who have family members who live in town. But, yeah, I mean, I've lived here for over 60 years and was here in the 64 flood. There's, yeah, the community pulls together when it's needed. And we are living proof of that. Everybody seems to look out for their neighbors, look out for their families. And we live in a wonderful little town. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Strong. Councilmember Wilson?
Just a question, did they, did you say that they they have put together a list of people that are that are more vulnerable others to?
I said that there was a, there was a list that has been developed. I don't know that it is all inclusive, but there has been a, just from the fact of the COVID and the volunteer corps reaching out and distributing food and aid to seniors and disabled in Riedel.
I guess something we just need to work on, trying to keep current and updating for time and time. Who is on that, particularly the elderly? I know that we have a lot of elderly people in the city.
Right.
So that we know, they may not even be aware of the fact that there is an emergency taking place with, in the recent PSPS things that we had a year ago. There was stuff, there were people didn't know, they just know their power went out and they didn't know why. And so that would be a concern, I think, to have some way of reaching out.
And I would just put this, I'm just gonna put this up here. Let's see if I can see it. Let's see. Text 888-777. Anyone who has a cell phone, anyway, has the ability to text that the city of Riedel, if you text to that number when there is extra Riedel zip code to that number. that the city of Riedel, if you text to that number, when there is, text your Riedel zip code to that number, and they, you will get notifications when things are happening. A notification will be sent to your text. So that's, you know, it's not the end all, but it's really a good, helpful tool that anyone can use who has a cellphone anyway, 888-777. And it even works for the old flip phones. So we just, we want to just let you know that there is a plan. And it came up during, also besides the letter, it came up during the Senator McGuire call. And I did not have the answers I should have had. And so that's, it's on the agenda. We are trying to address it. And if we need to update anything, then that is something that hopefully staff will get on to, and we will address it. And try and make sure that everyone who is vulnerable has some means. And as I think Councilmember Strawn is right, I haven't lived here that long, but it does seem like this city pulls together when it's needed. We did it during the drought. We, and so I think that we will pull together when we're needed to pull together for sure. But don't forget that number, 888-777. Text your zip code to it, and you will get updates.
And Mayor Garnes, if you could entertain me for
Absolutely.
30 seconds while we while I try to, oh my gosh, this is actually more difficult.
Right there, right there. Stop. Right there.
So you want to text the Riedel zip code, which is 95562, to triple eight, triple seven. And that'll log you into the system, and then the city can contact you directly and advise you of any issues coming up. There is a sign out in front of the police department, and we have issued these as every door direct mailers. But if you're at home watching, right now, you'd want to text the Riedel zip code, 95562, to triple eight, triple seven. And that will allow us to be able to communicate directly to you and advise you of life threatening emergencies or other types of emergencies. It's been used for, we've had gas leaks in town. And we used it extensively during PSPS to provide up to the second information to the public. So again, text 95562 to triple eight, triple seven. There's no charge for this. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Were there any hands raised or emails coming?
I do not see any hands raised at this moment.
And no emails received.
Thank you. And we will move on to the second reading by title only, and adoption of ordinance number 382-2020, amending existing sign regulations, section 17.30.300, table 7-1 of the Riedel Municipal Code. City managers.
And I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Kevin Caldwell.
Mayor Garnes, member of the council, this item starts on page 139 of your packet. This was originally presented to you at the meeting of September 1st. The amendments are actually shown on page 140 of your packet. And the planning commission recommendation, which was staff's recommendation, was to allow up to three on building signs. And that was due to basically corner lots, lots that may be empty on each side, increased visibility. Councilmember Strawn brought up a good point and some concerns regarding allowing up to three illuminated signs on buildings. And actually suggested that we allow an exception or discretionary process in order to exceed the now existing one sign limit on the building. So that is one of the options in front of your council tonight. Staff also drafted attachment two, which would allow two on building signs per business and would also create an exception to exceed the number of signs more than two through a news permit process going to the planning commission, which of course, neighbors within 300 feet would be notified of the planning commission meeting. That exception is on the bottom of page 140, note number four. So that's an option for you to do as well. Another option for you to do is leave the sign regulations alone. So there's a couple of different talking points here. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I would like to remind the council that the planning commission did recommend to allow three onsite signs, and as reflected in the attachment one ordinance. And again, the attachment two ordinance would allow two on building signs with an exception provision to go through that use permit process. Again, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Councilmember Strawn?
Well, you know, I want to leave them as they are, but I know there's only three of us here. If I vote no, what's going to happen? The rest of you all wanted it to pass, so whatever. I will vote yes if I need to vote yes, but I really want to vote no.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Really, I actually agreed with you, but I was willing to go with option two, so.
Well, I'd like to leave it as is. You know, if they need more than what is, then they can come into the planning commission and ask for variance, and then they can deal with it. It's, to me, I don't think there's any, we already went over this sign stuff when we put this stuff in.
Mayor Garnes, if I may, in support of what Councilmember Strawn is suggesting, what we would have to do, again, is we would have to modify, amend note number four on the bottom of page 140 to include the number. So if we allowed as it is and made this slight modification to allow an use permit process to exceed more than one sign, I think that would be consistent with what Councilmember Strawn is recommending.
Thank you. Well, what does it read right now, Kevin? One sign.
Right now, you can only get the exception for height and size limit and not the number.
I see.
So if we modify this to include the number limit, then they could apply for an use permit to have more than one sign on the building. And I have no objection to that if the council finds that to be in the public interest.
I seem to like that idea better, is that they, is option two just one sign?
Option two is two signs, and a third sign needs a cup.
Needs a what?
Correct.
A conditional use permit.
The existing is one, and anything else has to go to a conditional use permit.
The existing is one with no exception to the number. Only an exception to the height and the size of the sign. What Councilmember Strawn, I believe, is recommending is to include an exception to the number as well. And I think that's what you originally touched on. So if they want more than one on building sign, they would have to go to the planning commission and get approval. And of course, that process involves neighborhood participation.
Okay, I like that better with the, I don't see this being something that there's going to be a mass track down to put up a bunch of signs. And if somebody's doing something in the city, that it's good to have the surrounding residents involved. And then have a, the few that we've changed that I've, since I've been around this, they've sent the word out, and nobody, nobody wrote back and made a big deal out of it. So they were notified, but they chose not to respond.
I agree. Is there a fee involved if they have to apply for a conditional use permit?
Yes, there is a fee. The fee is basically the actual cost based on staff's burden rate. And obviously, the more controversial a project is, the more costly it's going to be, because staff is going to have to respond to neighbors. But the use permit process is required for a number of things in the city. If you're going into business and you need that additional sign, I think most businesses would pursue it. It's a $500 deposit. The last few that we've done, in between $500 and $1,000 for use permits.
So would it discourage a business from coming here? That
I believe not.
Okay, there you go. Okay.
Believe not.
I'm sorry, did you need to say something?
It doesn't like me to, if you're going to the trouble of going to the business to say, well, everything was fine, except they wanted me to have a conditional use permit on how many signs I have. I don't see that being a deterrent factor, although I'm not the business person.
So Kevin
Mayor Garnes, if I may.
Number work, you know, make the note, to make the note work, because it sounds like the three of us are on the same page.
Basically, you would recommend adoption of ordinance 382-2020, maintaining the one size limit with an exception to the number, I'm sorry, a one number limit on building, with an exception through an use permit process. And then I would modify the ordinance accordingly and have you as the mayor sign it.
Okay, so that would then
It's a fine amount of pay.
So just so we're all very clear, so basically it would stay the same with the exception of we are now allowing a conditional use permit process if you want more than one sign.
Correct.
That's what we're saying, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion for that? Oh, no, wait. Is there a public comment?
Apparently, no hands are raised.
Thank you. Are there email?
No written comment.
Okay, no phone calls in, so thank you. Is there a motion then for the, to accept? Uh oh, I lost my page.
To approve and adopt ordinance 3882-20.
Yes, 382-2020. With the aforementioned changes that keep it the same, but with the exception of allowing a conditional use permit. There are motion for
Yep, to exceed more than one on building sign.
More than one sign, yes.
So I just want to, so are they going to put up 10 signs? I mean, are we going to put
They would have, they would have to go to the planning commission, of course, for any more than one. So there would be public input, public review, neighborhood participation.
So not to exceed, would you, are you saying that, when you said the 10 signs, are you saying one sign, conditional use permit, not to exceed three signs?
Yeah, that might be good.
I can work with that. If I can remember how to say
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Not to exceed three.
I believe that's an excellent motion.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Strawn?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Garnes?
Yes. Motion passes 3-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. And now we are on to council reports and communications. Councilmember Wilson?
Not a lot, but I guess if you watch the news tonight, HWMA made like an official statement, and they actually came out a couple of days ago, but it was on the news tonight, that they are decertifying, being a CRV buyback, the other two agencies in the county decertified, that being Recology and Humboldt Waste Management. So that put everything on Humboldt Waste Management. And when Humboldt Waste Management tried to work out a plan that the county was actually going to volunteer the staff to, so they could do this by appointment and get people staged to come bring in their CRVs, the CalRecycle told the HWMA no. So they're making it real difficult for the the agencies that are already losing money. HWMA loses money for, they buy the, for payback, they pay $1.50 per pound for aluminum cans, and they're able to sell them for 30 cents a pound. So it's about a five to one loss that is subsidized to your solid waste garbage. And so the state is trying to fix a busted wheel. By the way, the state receives $1.6 billion, that's a billion with a B. They're hoping to get 50 million through their cannabis regulations, where they're receiving 1.6 that they, they don't ever have to give back. They just use it for their bureaucracy and whatever they do. So I just want to point out that it's not the local agency that's the culprit. It's, and the citizen is stuck with a kind of a losing hand on his, on his his CRV product. And I suggest, as we're doing, I'm just going to put it in my recycle bin and call it, it just goes at the price of buying a canned soda or a bottled beer or bottled water, that that price of that CRV bottle gets paid for. It's already included in the price of my bottle. And we have a meeting on, that we'll talk about probably this coming Thursday, but that's just the current state of affairs.
Thank you. Councilmember Strawn?
No, I don't think I have anything else to report. HCOG meeting went well, and I'm supposed to be having a hazmat meeting coming up and an HCOG meeting on the third week, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I will be attending Virtual League of California Cities Annual Conference Wednesday through Friday of this week, the 7th through the 9th. And I am to be installed as the president of the Redwood Empire Division, which is our division up here in Mendocino, all of our areas on October 16th. And I think that I already gave you the update on Danko, so I think that's it for me.
What other comment? Were we going to agendize the request by Councilmember Strawn for talking about the ballpark graffiti situation?
Sure. I mean, I'm okay with it.
I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. Okay, well, I think that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I'll second that. Thank you. Take care, everybody. Stay healthy.
Okay, you too.
We'll return to the meeting of October 20th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Thank you.